Somebody introduces it, take a vote.
Yep.
And I know you have my notes with me.
Oh yeah.
She's in the culture, so it's obvious.
I thought you called the record and made the recess.
So we have an update?
I thought Trump said it was after helping rec. But I see, I thought it was Monday.
As I said, she's taken over.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Right, yeah. That's Trump said, I'm, I mean.
It's a little breakfast for Saturday if anybody's interested in all. One for you, for Marion. One for you. Breakfast in the morning, Mr. Mayor. I think you already got that.
I'd like to call to order Health and Recreation Committee. Do we need a motion to adjourn?
No, we're going to do the committee, then we're going to go right to the council meeting.
Okay. Health and Recreation Committee, their first item on the agenda for the golf course tree removal, Ms. Moore.
Madam Chair, if I could address that, that the previously asked the council to award a bid for removals of trees at the golf course. The bidder that the city had attempted to award the contract to was unable to obtain a bid bond sufficient credibility for the city. And so I'm asking the council now to go back to the list of bidders, move to go to the second lowest bidder. And appreciate the council's consideration in a special meeting because this is somewhat time sensitive. While it may be hard to imagine today that the frost will eventually go out of the ground.
It's not going to.
And that they want to be able to go on the golf course while the frost is still on the ground, so it minimizes the potential for any damage for moving the trucks across the fairways or grounds.
Are there any questions?
Yes.
Mr. Kozier.
Thank you. So the one who's going to receive this is the RIA Wicks. Is that who it is, Mr. Mayor? That's who it is?
Yes.
And their bid is nearly double what the other bid was. And we're still comfortable going with that, Gary?
It is. It is under our original estimates. But it is, again, the first one was a very good price. They're not able to meet the terms and conditions of the bid package.
And so we've gone to the next highest bidder?
Correct. Which is under our original estimate, but higher than what we were going to go with on the others.
Are there any other questions? And state a motion? Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, is there anything else to come before Health and Recreation? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Oh, you want to read? Do you want to adjourn?
There's nothing else for her.
No, there's nothing else. Okay. I need a second.
A second.
All those in favor or adjourned?
All right, I'm going to call and order the special city council meeting for this evening. If the clerk would call the roll.
Mr. Mutavaren, excused. Mr. Ferrari.
Present.
Mr. Riggi.
Here.
Ms. Porterfield. Ms. Parazzo.
Present.
Mr. Kozier.
Here.
Ms. King.
Present. And if the clerk would also read the notice of the meeting and proof of service.
Notice of meeting dated February 27th, Friday, February 27th, to the council. An emergency city council meeting has been requested for Monday, March 2nd, to accept the bid and award the contract for golf course tree removal. D and L Tree Service, who was awarded the contract on January 26th, has been unable to secure a performance bond for the contract. The awarding of a new contract is time sensitive for the listed reasons. The time period contractors must honor their pricing is expiring. Number two, the contractor needs to be ready to go soon as possible. A new resolution will be introduced at Monday night's committee meeting and needs to be acted upon at a special council meeting on the same night. Trump Thorne City Clerk. Proof of service comes from email tracking. Recipient, Ed Kozier, delivered 2/27/2015 at 11:14 a.m. John Ferrari delivered 2/27/15, 11:14 a.m. John Mutavaren delivered 2/27/15, 11:14 a.m. Lisa Parazzo delivered 2/27/2015, 11:14 a.m. Marion Porterfield delivered 2/27/15, 11:14 a.m. Peggy King delivered 2/27/15, 11:14 a.m. Vincent Riggi delivered 2/27/2015, 11:14 a.m.
Okay. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution to award the bid and contract for the golf course tree removal to Wicks Arborists. Mr. Kozier smooths it, and Porterfield seconds it. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion is carried. So there's nothing else to come before this special city council meeting? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Mr. Kozier, second by Ms. Porterfield. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, adjourn. The next item on the agenda, I did not put in a committee. Mr. Kozier and I have had some conversation about reinstituting the Intergovernmental Relations Committee. This is a committee that still exists. It was active for many years, went inactive a number of years ago. And now with, I think, everything going on in terms of the governor's expectations of, you know, that we're going to be looking at consolidation and all of that, Mr. Kozier thought it would be appropriate to maybe re-get it moved to active again. So, Mr. Kozier, do you want to speak to this?
Yeah, and if I can, again, I think it's a very important committee, again, as Ms. King spoke, with all the incentives that are out there and regulations regarding the governor's budget and the tax gap and so on. And with my previous experience as a county legislator and chairing the Shared Services Committee with Schenectady County, I just think it's a very important committee that we reestablish and bring it back to light, because there is so many great things happening here in the city and the county. And I would just like to make sure that we, as a city council, have a seat at that table and we can continue to work with the county, local businesses, including the school districts and municipal housing authority as well, which is another entity that we want to make sure we bring into this. So I appreciate the president's concern, and I just hope that we can move on with this committee forward.
Thoughts, comments? Ms. Porterfield.
Does it make sense, we, you know, we, I know that it was a standing committee, at least in our city code. Does it make sense to make it part of the existing government ops committee?
That's certainly a possibility, but I guess my thinking is more, calling it intergovernmental really, to me, addresses very specifically what we're trying to do here. So I think, you know, my own feeling is I think I would like to see it reactivated.
And I understand about the name, but what I'm saying is, could we make it government-slash-intergovernmental? Is it so different in terms of the government operations that it doesn't make sense to have it all one? Is it that different? That's really basically the question I'm asking.
Other thoughts on this?
If I may, the government operations are really concerning the city services for the most part. I understand what you're saying, but I just think this is a very important committee, that it's a standalone committee. There's just so many opportunities that we have out there that we need to work on. And again, I just think it's something that we really have to have a separate committee for. And I'm just hoping that we can move it forward and continue to work with the county and the school districts and other agencies through this committee.
Other thoughts?
Have you proposed committee members for the committee?
Not at this point, but we will be, assuming we do reactivate it, then we'll definitely look at that. Yeah. Unless, so if there's no opposition, then, as I said, I would like to reactivate it. And we'll kind of see where we go with it. Mr. McCarthy?
It's never been abolished. It's in the books.
No, right, yes.
It's always been active.
Right, just want to make it active.
It's solely your project.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. President.
Well, in that case, then, I would recommend we reactivate it. So, and I know several of us attended the meeting that the county held, and I know Mr. Hughes is here, and Mr. Fuhrman is here, to talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, if we can, we can have them both come up, if you don't mind. Again, Roy Fuhrman is the county legislator, and our fellow legislator here with the city, Gary Hughes. Roy is the chair of the Shared Services and Intergovernmental Cooperation with Schenectady County, and Gary, of course, is the county legislator representing District 2. So again, as Ms. King had said, there was a few of us that came to the, went to the forum that was held by the county, but I just think it's such an important topic that the few of us that were not able to make it, I would just like to give them a very brief overview, and maybe try to start about the timeline and where we go from there. So again, Mr. Fuhrman or Mr. Hughes?
Well, thank you, Councilman Kozier. It's always a pleasure to meet with the city council. We won't take much of your time tonight, but as prologue, we're all aware that there is increasing pressure on municipalities to reduce their operating costs by finding ways to share services, by finding ways to consolidate. I think both the city and Schenectady County have been very good partners for a number of years. Councilman Kozier and I have worked on a few things, but we have with other members of the council as well. The impetus this year is some changes in the governor's proposed budget in the way that the property tax rebate would be administered and requiring communities to reach certain thresholds in terms of savings. I believe we're both in very good shape in that area, and the county is, and I believe the city is as well. But there are opportunities out there that we can and should explore. Legislator Fuhrman resides in Scotia, represents District 3, which is Scotia, Glenville, and Niskiuna, and chairs the county's Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee. We, as the, really the only countywide municipality, are in good position to assist other municipalities when we can, to coordinate, to facilitate, to take part in. We have engaged in shared services arrangements that have saved the county money, and in some instances, we have engaged in services where other municipalities save money, and the county has held expenditure neutral. And we're certainly open to any and all of those sorts of relationships. And we're really just here, at Chair Kozier's request tonight, to start a dialogue. With that, I'd like to introduce my friend and colleague from Scotia, Roy Fuhrman.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you too, council, for having me. Thank you, Ed, and Gary for initiating me coming down. So I chair the county-level Committee on Intergovernmental Cooperation. Just as Gary had mentioned, you know, the city and the county have a long history of many successes with shared services, whether it's the sales tax agreement, the salt shed, different services being able to be traded back and forth. And we've already have a proven track record of saving money. And with the governor's initiatives, you know, we are all well positioned for the upcoming June 1st deadline of having a 1% proof of a shared services plan on your total budget. I believe for you folks, that's going to be about $313,000 or $330,000 approving in years 17, 18, and 19, how you're going to take 1% off your budget through shared services. And obviously, the big thing, you know, for the past year has been the UCC, which has been a tremendous success. Schenectady alone is saving $249,000 for the year. You'll be able to count that every year under the governor's tax plan. So, you know, again, the county and the city are positioned. And so really, what we're talking about is just looking forward, you know? Prior to the UCC coming into formation, it's really, you know, the talks started, '68, you talked to some people, it was up to 15 years ago that those talks were started. So what's next is the big question. You know, obviously, it took a very long time to get the UCC up and running. It is now, so it's time to look again, to look forward into how we can continue to share services. You know, the county itself wasn't a dispatcher, you know, we weren't really in the business of having a dispatch center, but guess what? It's revenue neutral for us. It helps every single municipality that came in, so it just makes sense to really honestly look at things. We had our meeting on the 17th. We're having another meeting coming up on the 10th, March 10th, at 10 a.m., for supervisors and or designate, to really come and first decide at what level of the plan are we going to go in together for June 1st, which has to be certified by the CEO and the CFI of each municipality. And that's coming up by June 1st, and I believe somewhere around May, May 15th, you know, we'll need to know from the city, from the towns, from the villages, at what extent we will be coming together for a joint plan. But if not, that's okay too, because again, the second purpose of this meeting is looking forward again. What can we do next to share these services? Obviously, you know, between group purchasing, or looking at public works, or whatever we are doing, how can we save? How can we go forward in the future and work together? So, you know, again, I appreciate everybody having me. Gary, thanks for having me. Ed, thanks for having me. My phone is always open. If anybody has an idea or a comment or wants to talk to me, please give me a call. Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
And I think, Ms. King, another important thing that came out of the meeting that we had was to engage the public as well. And perhaps something we can work on with the mayor in the future is to have some public meetings regarding shared services and cooperation, to get some input from our neighbors, from our communities, because again, it's not just the folks sitting at this table that really have the good ideas, it's sometimes it's the folks that are in the neighborhoods that really can lead us in the right direction on the project, particular savings. So again, working together, I think it's an important piece as well. And the UCC is the United Communications Center, Central Dispatch, for those of you who are trying to figure out what UCC is. And again, that was a long time coming. Any other questions of the gentleman? Again, thank you very, very much for coming. We appreciate, and we look forward to our continued work in relationship with the county. All right? Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks, everybody.
All right, I will now call City Development and Planning to order. We have a number of ceremonial resolutions. The first is the Ancient Order of Hibernians. Someone move that? Okay, moved by Ms. Porterfield, second by Ms. Ferrari, all in favor? Aye. Okay, the second one is the ceremonial resolution for the Persian Film Festival.
Actually, yeah, my name's not on the agenda, but...
Okay, I was wondering...
Yeah. It's, the Film Festival is to mark the spring equinox and Persian New Year, and it will run on Friday, March 20th, 21st, and 22nd, screen over 20 Persian films in all genres. And I think, you know, this is Iranians, as well as other Persian-speaking community, Afghan, several things I can pronounce, India, Pakistan. But I think that this is, you know, this is a really wonderful effort, and in light of what a diverse community that we live in, and we saw that at our last council meetings, I just think recognizing the effort to put all of this together, a local man who teaches at Siena, just think it would be nice to heighten awareness of his efforts and maybe bring additional people to the film festival.
So I want to make a motion to approve this? Okay, Ms. Porterfield, second by Mr. Ferrari, all in favor? Aye. And Women's History Month, Ms. Porterfield?
Well, as we all know, it's March, it's Women's History Month, so I just thought it was important that we recognize that and have a ceremonial resolution for that. I'll take care of getting the information and putting that together.
Okay, very good. You want to move that? Mr. Ferrari, second by Ms. Porterfield, all in favor?
Aye.
And a revocable permit for Belcebo Bistro. Mr. Allen.
Good evening. Are you seeing your packet? Typical signed revocable permit for Belcebo Bistro. It's looking to operate 96 J Street, which is across the street on the corner of J and Liberty. It's a restaurant that's relocating from J Street, looking to put a sign on the existing overhang, as shown in the renderings. Really have no issues with it.
Questions? Move it. Okay, second, all in favor? Aye. That was easy. Any further discussion on the Brandywine and State Street project and zoning changes? We had the public hearing, we had two people speak in favor. I had another gentleman come up who owns property right in that area, come up to me after the meeting and say he's very enthusiastic about it. So I think this is probably good to go.
Yes.
All right.
Motion of the audience?
So anyway, I'll entertain a motion to approve that. Okay, second, all in favor? Aye. Okay. And last is 126 Robinson Street, but I see that we're going to be holding that for executive session. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to recess City Development and Planning. Mr. Ferrari, second by Ms. Porterfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Call to order Public Service and Utilities. I'm going to call Mr. Allen up about a discussion about the possible closing of pedestrian tunnel.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, if I could just, there's a, there's a tunnel that runs under I-90 that goes from Lasserie over into Grouse Park. The tunnel is owned by the state of New York. The agreement is it's maintained by the city of Schenectady. There's been a number of complaints that we've received where it may be fostering criminal activity undesirable, people moving back and forth from one side of I-90 to the other. We've had several requests to actually close it. Tunnel is not in the best of shape, can become subject to ongoing vandalism where there's been lights there in the entrance ways. And so DOT had requested that if we were going to close it, that we have a public hearing and just get people's input on it. Internally, the staff is making recognition, we probably should close it, police department's perspective, and just our inability to keep up the ongoing maintenance. And the utilization, I believe, over time has dropped dramatically, and people just like going back and forth. When Grouse Park was, in fact, a middle school, the city school district, there was probably more traffic there than no longer exists. And so asking the council to consider holding a public hearing to just allow people to comment one way or the other, if they want to have it open and review that, or if they want to close it, we close it in some way that be acceptable to DOT.
Any questions? I just think having a public hearing is a really good way to get, let people, get people aware that we're talking about this and get their input.
That's been a problem for years. That's why I think that building that burned in Grouse Park, the vandals exited through that tunnel. It's been a problem for a long time. Any questions?
So we just need a motion call for public hearing?
Mm-hmm. Second.
All in favor? Aye. And next, we are going to call Mr. Allen forward about the award, the bid and contract for the City Hall boiler replacement to Campania Plumbing and Heating.
Hello? As you may or may not be aware, the boilers at City Hall are outdated and in a state of disrepair. We've had a consultant come evaluate the boilers. We've had some mechanical contractors come repair the boilers, however, from all accounts purposes, they are on their last legs. We have had the boilers checked for asbestos. We do have a little bit, but we'll be addressing that. We did put out a spec, had the boilers replaced, and it was awarded to Campania Plumbing. We believe that the bid is in good standing and that we would like to move forward with this as soon as possible.
Any questions? I'd like to entertain a motion to move this. All in favor?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Is there anything else that needs to come before Public Service and Utilities? I'd like to entertain a motion to close.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye. I will call to order Government Operations, first thing, our favorite topic, the abandoned and extended parking. I sent a couple of scenarios to Mr. Fallatigo this week, one of which was, what if we change, change to read, you know, if they, if the car is impeding entry or egress? That it be decided by the chief of police that the car can be removed, or hardship, and Mr. Fallatigo didn't like the word hardship. He wanted, he wanted more of a definition of hardship, so I'll turn to my colleagues in the next couple of weeks to see if we can get that nailed down. My second suggestion was still the entry or egress, but then, or if a resident didn't live within 200 feet of the vehicle. Because what I thought, in this case, the owner of the car didn't reside within 200 feet of the vehicle. So that somebody could still park on the street for 48 hours legally, without any issue. It would address the issue that Mr. Riggi brought up of garages parking their cars that had been, you know, fixed and waiting for the owners to pick them up on residential streets and, you know, hindering other people from parking there. But it would still allow people who lived there to park for more than 48 hours. So Mr. Fallatigo is looking into that. He wasn't sure if that was something we could do, because it would be kind of similar to what Albany did with the residential parking thing, but really quite different. But some of the same legal, like, okay, well, you know, if you reside in this neighborhood kind of thing. So still working on it, not willing to give up on it. We have four council members that want to see a change at least, and I may be more support than that if we get to a place of, you know, legal good standing and a good solution for all, without, with it being trackable and all of that. So we're still working on it. Stay tuned. I'm happy to receive any input from anyone else on this as we go forward. But I still think that the way it's written is just not necessarily a good thing for the residents of the city. So unless there's any questions or comments on that, we'll just move along. Excellent. I also brought up with Mr. Fallatigo D, the issue of people parking in the driveway. Not sure is anything legal that they can change with that, because it's a personal, it's a private property, which is kind of...
Well, I don't understand that. If we written into the code the 96 hours, how can we not change the code? We have it, it's our hope.
I think it was a matter of who gets to tow the car.
Well, now, the way it's currently written in D is after 96 hours, you can do something. Why couldn't we just change the timeframe? It doesn't say we can never do anything. It says after 96 hours, the person can do something. So I'm not sure that why...
Why don't you even call on that tomorrow and we'll talk about it, if there's something that I'm missing that feels like we can do something with, you know, will that, I mean, in that direction? And, you know, from my review of it, when somebody's parking, like, if they go, if they abandon the car on somebody else's property, then, and it meets the legal definition of an abandoned vehicle, that's actually a misdemeanor. So in those cases, the police would be obligated to go there and remove the vehicle, because we have the obligation as municipality to remove abandoned vehicles. But in general, if you just go and you park in your neighbor's driveway, not a nice thing to do, really may not get rise to be criminal activity where our police department would get involved, pay for the cost of tow, instead of the homeowner doing it themselves.
Well, I think we should take a look at it, because D clearly says after 96 hours, you can do something. So my recommendation is that be a lot fewer hours. So definitely, I'd like to talk more about that, because it doesn't make sense if you can just park in somebody's driveway and say, hey, do something. It just doesn't make sense. Is there anything else that needs to come before Public Service and Utilities? I'd like to entertain a motion to close.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye. Right, I will call to order Government Operations. First thing, our favorite topic, the abandoned and extended parking. I sent a couple of scenarios to Mr. Faltego this week, one of which was, what if we change, change it to read, you know, if they, if the car is impeding entry or egress, that it be decided by the Chief of Police that the car can be removed or hardship? And Mr. Faltego didn't like the word hardship. He wanted, he wanted more of a definition of hardship. So I'll turn to my colleagues in the next couple of weeks to see if we can get that nailed down. My second suggestion was still the entry or egress, but then, or if a resident didn't live within 200 feet of the vehicle. Because what I thought, in this case, the owner of the car didn't reside within 200 feet of the vehicle. So that somebody could still park on the street for 48 hours legally without any issue. It would address the issue that Mr. Reedy brought up of garages parking their cars that had been, you know, fixed and waiting for the owners to pick them up on residential streets and, you know, hindering other people from parking there. But it would still allow people who live there to park for more than 48 hours. So Mr. Faltego is looking into that. He wasn't sure if that was something we could do, because it would be kind of similar to what Albany did with the residential parking thing, but really quite different. But some of the same legal, like, okay, well, you know, if you reside in this neighborhood kind of thing. So still working on it, not willing to give up on it. We have four council members that want to see a change at least, and I, maybe more support than that if we get to a place of, you know, legal good standing and a good solution for all without, with it being trackable and all of that. So we're still working on it. Stay tuned. I'm happy to receive any input from anyone else on this as we go forward. But I still think that the way it's written is just not necessarily a good thing for the residents of the city. So unless there's any questions or comments on that, we'll just move along. Excellent. I also brought up with Mr. Faltego D, the issue of people parking in the driveway. Not sure there's anything legal that they can change with that, because it's a personal, it's a private property, which is kind of...
Well, I don't understand that. If we've written into the code the 96 hours, how can we not change the code? We haven't. It's our hope.
I think it was a matter of who gets to tow the car.
Well, now, the way it's currently written in D is after 96 hours, you can do something. Why couldn't we just change the timeframe? It doesn't say we can never do anything. It says after 96 hours, the person can do something. So I'm not sure that why...
Why don't you mean calling that tomorrow and we'll talk about it? If there's something that I'm missing that feels like we can do something with, you know, we'll definitely, in that direction and, you know, from my review of it, when we're, somebody's parking it, like, if they go, if they abandon the car on somebody else's property, then, and it meets the legal definition of an abandoned vehicle, that's actually a misdemeanor. So in those cases, the police would be obligated to go there and remove the vehicle, because we have the obligation as municipality to remove abandoned vehicles. But in general, if you just go and you park in your neighbor's driveway, not a nice thing to do. Really may not give rise to criminal activity where our police department would get involved, pay for the cost of tow, instead of the homeowner doing it themselves.
Well, I think we should take a look at it, because, because D clearly says after 96 hours, you can do something. So my recommendation is that be a lot fewer hours. So definitely, I'd like to talk more about that, because it doesn't make sense if you can just park in somebody's driveway and say, hey, do something. It just doesn't make sense.
But doesn't someone always have the option to have them towed? I mean, not...
On their own. On their own. Yeah, absolutely.
Or private property, yes.
Yes.
Because it's on private property, right?
Right.
And I'll also forward, Mr. Faltego's, our correspondence to the...
Okay.
Okay. And next up, House of State Review Board. There was an email sent around with proposed changes, as discussed in prior council meetings. So everyone had a chance to review that, entertain questions or comments. It does include the change that we had proposed of having a multi-unit property owner on there, and outlines the council as it would function for our discussion. Yes, Mr. Porterfield?
Well, I just got this this afternoon, so with the changes. So I don't know if we'll move into this, but there's just a couple of other things I think we really, to add in there, if we can, regarding the membership. And I know it, we understand that, but it must be a city resident that's not in there. And I know the mayor always insists that we appoint folks who live in the city, but I think that whoever we're appointing must be a resident of the city of Schenectady. And also downwards says chairman. These are only two things I saw. Chairman, can we limit the chairship to two years? There should be some limit to how long an individual can sit as a chair of a committee. We do it at all, at MHA, it's two years. Here, as council president, it's two years.
What about our other standing committees? Do we have limits of them?
Well, that's what I don't know. That's why we're in discussion here, so that's why I was just asking.
Well, the lift, the term of office limit is two years. So if you have to cycle out and be reappointed, then you would have to reappoint a chair, right? I mean, does that cover it, or? I mean, we can certainly add that language in, that's not going to be... Well, is there a problem with somebody being a chair if they're reappointed and then reappointed as the chair by the group?
Again, I'm just bringing up as a suggestion.
As the chair of the BZA for many years. I don't know if that's good or bad, I'm just...
Because if someone's doing a job that everybody's appreciating, you know, why wouldn't you reappoint someone that is...
Leadership works.
Exactly.
Well, we've done it here at the City Council, though. MHA board, too, we limit them to two years. Everywhere, it's just a change of leadership, a change of direction and...
But Peggy's on her second two-year term.
No.
No, no, she's not.
No, because I filled Denise's...
But you are, we don't, we are, the same chair can be reappointed.
Right.
Yeah, we don't have anything written to the effect that it's going to change every two years. It's just been kind of an understanding.
I don't, I don't entertain other people's comments, but I also agree with Mr. Ferrari. If there's leadership in place that's working and building consensus, I don't see why that shouldn't continue.
Yeah, I also don't think that we should apply something to one committee that doesn't apply to all committees. So if that's, if that's the case, we would need to take a look at all the committees and what the length of the chair...
I'm all right with that, yeah.
And I would think, like, I think like you mentioned earlier, if it's a two-year, you know, if the person is on there for a two-year term, has to be reappointed, then I would think, yes, you also would have to, that would be the opportunity to make a change in leadership if one was needed.
Other comments, questions?
It might ask that you give me the authority to designate a chair for the first appointment, only where we, according to reconstitute, the environmental or the energy advisory board reappointed that, and the viewer question, kind of, they're supposed to elect their chair on their own, and who's going to be the chair? And so that board is kind of languished, in terms of they're not looking to take any more award, but we would put some organizational structure and responsibility as we're looking to ramp it up and get it started initially.
Which makes sense, because if you have people that don't know one another, how do you decide who chairs it? Yes, Ms. Porterfield?
So this is really a question. So are you just asking from the board initially?
Right, just in this...
Get started?
You know, should the council move ahead with this, really discuss the names, make the appointment, designate somebody as the chair for that initial one-year, two-year term, whatever the council wanted, and then revert back to the prerogative of the board?
Yeah, I would like, I'm comfortable with that, but I would like it at a year, because after a year, the board will know each other enough, and if they feel there's a change in leadership, it should be their prerogative to be able to change it, you know, before a two-year term. Anyone else? Ms. King?
My only other comment, and I'll pass this on, is to make, when we're doing things like this, to make sure it's gender neutral. So chair instead of chairman, and he or slash she, that kind of thing.
Yeah, this is an old committee.
Yes.
Other questions or comments? Now, the next step is to call for public hearing, Ms. Faltego, yes? So, yes.
If I may, I manage, and in respect to John Mulderverin, Councilman Mulderverin, who was not here this evening, and again, I just received this myself, is there any way we can hold this for two more weeks, just so we can review this? And again, because he might have some changes that he might want to include or take out of this, and then we have to have another public hearing? Or would we not have to have another public hearing? Because the public hearing is on what we're including in this document as it is, correct?
Right, but that would be for Monday night's vote.
Calling for a public hearing. You're holding the public hearing.
Two weeks after.
And then we can still make changes.
So that gives us another reason to...
And in theory, based on the comments that you would receive at the public hearing, you might change one thing or the other. Maybe make the terms longer, maybe make them shorter.
As long as Councilman Mulderverin will be able to insert whatever comments that he was wanted and concerns that he had regarding this legislation, I think he'll be fine.
You can speak at the public hearing?
Well, yeah, yes. Ms. Porterfield? Under 68.3 for Terms of Office, where it talks about the members currently serving on the Municipal Residence Board, Multiple Residence Board, what is that?
That's this board, which we're, the old title, which we're looking to reconstitute.
So then that, should that be changed to the name it's going to be?
Right.
If I may...
So how's standard to be more...
It wouldn't really have any effect either way, because when this was written, there was another board, the Multiple Residence Board, that already was existing, so it's just handling the fact that there are people who are on that board, who are then going to be coming onto this one. This one, since it's been dormant, that clause wouldn't have any effect. We could take it out if you'd like to.
We should take it out.
Yeah, if it doesn't make, if it doesn't have any effect, it's...
Need to be there.
Other questions?
In terms of membership, it does, I mean, it states who, but will any city staff be a part of this board?
I'm not looking to appoint any city staff. They would function in an advisory role.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, Congress?
If the council had a strong feeling the other way, I would first consider it.
It was just an inverted, no? What feeling is that?
Okay, so if I could have a motion to call for public hearing? Thank you. A second, all in favor? Aye. One more thing, that's not on the agenda, to bring to the committee, and that is Wednesday night, the Board of Zoning Appeals will meet, and there are a couple of advertising companies that are seeking a variance. They are putting up new billboards and wish to not adhere by the zoning requirement of removing two existing billboards before they put up the one billboard. In this particular case, they're electronic billboards. And bringing this to the council's awareness, because I believe that there are other, there are other billboard companies also putting up billboards that are adhering to the zoning regulations of removing two. And after discussion or questions, if we agree as a council, I would like to consider that we draft a memo to the Board of Zoning Appeals, asking them to please stand by our zoning in that if these companies want to put up a billboard, that they remove two others. So open for questions and comments on that.
So prior to the public hearing, you want us to, there, this hearing on Wednesday, you want us to, to draft with a recommendation that they stick by that before we even hear what they have to say with the...
Right, I feel like, my, my thing is, you know, we have other companies coming in, they're adhering to these rules, and I think, you know, it's a crucial time in our city of growth that, you know, we need to be cognizant of what our city looks like, especially if we have a lot of electronic billboards going up, and, you know, we have these zoning changes, or these zoning requirements in effect for a reason, and I just, I feel strongly that, you know, we don't want the city covered in billboards, especially with the electronic ones going up. Yes, Ms. Porterfield?
Well, I think that there's a reason that we have, we have variances, and we allow people to come and make their case. So I personally would say we should hear what their case is and what their reasoning is before we would recommend, make that recommendation. That's what, that would be my preference, to hear what people have to say, as opposed to, because we're offering the opportunity to say, here, if you need a variance, come and ask us for it. So they're doing that. But I think as a, as a council, we say no before they even make their case. It just doesn't seem like it's very fair to make that decision before they've made their case. Maybe there are other people that have not asked for them because they don't need that. This group feels that they need it for whatever the reason is. And certainly, I'd like to be able to hear those reasons.
Fair point. Mr. Reedy?
But can the CVA vote on that that night to allow the variance?
Absolutely.
So then maybe we should make a recommendation that if they could hold it for two weeks until they, until we get to see what the, what may be presented that night, because otherwise it could be voted on that night, so we have no call on it whatsoever.
Another great question.
So if they could hold it for two weeks, instead of granting it that night, to hear from us, or whatever, I don't know what their, it's a once a month they meet?
Yes.
Okay, so if they could hold it a cycle?
Certainly it's not...
That way, we could weigh in that way. Otherwise, we can't weigh in.
Right.
The deal will be done, right?
Right. And, you know, point being also that, and I respect Ms. Porterfield's point, but anyone can go for a variance, right? I mean, you know, anybody can go for a variance. So you have some, you know, other people that are putting up billboards that may not think they'd get the variance, but they're taking the chance on it, so, but, good point. Other questions or comments?
Another thought, too, is whether to do a letter just saying that, you know, we, that unless it's a really unusual request or special situation, that they, you know, so in other words, we're not saying, don't award it, but just make sure you, if you're awarding it, it's a really, you know, special reason or unique need or something to that effect.
I think doing something like that just kind of sends a, sends a message to the board, and I think that we should just wait to hear, because that kind of, that, whether it's intention, whatever the letter says, the fact that it comes from the council, it kind of, you know, sends a message. I think we should just kind of be hands off until we hear whatever it is that they're asking for.
Go to the meeting, make your comments at the meeting.
I try to go to the...
Right, that's what I'm saying, right.
We can do that, but then we're not acting as a council. We're acting as a, as a single person. So I think the, the discussion was, you know, to act as a council, and that's only if everybody's in agreement, right? So, you know, let me, I'll work with Mr. Thorne on this, and if anything, we'll just, I'll see, I'll ask Mr. Strickman if this is time-sensitive in any way, and if we draft anything, it will be a memo simply asking them to hold their decision until we can review the circumstances.
I'd be agreeable to us asking them to hold the decision, yeah.
Yep. And I'll get it out to everybody before we actually formally send it to the chair also, so that everybody's in agreement if we're acting, you know, as one voice. So, okay. Anything else to come before Government Operations? Ask for multiple adjournments? All second, all in favor? Aye.
Call for reclaims. entertain a motion going executive session.
So moved.
I'll second, and all in favor?
Aye. Also, just so you know, I'm going to pass this around, the letter we sent to Governor Cuomo after the death of his father. We've all seen the letter we got, but this was also the program from the service.